Welcome everybody to the City Council Select Committee to Study Barriers to Serving on Seaboard and Commission. Today is March 26, Sunday, March 26, 12:06. We're gonna call, we're gonna do roll call. Jamila?
Yeah.
Gary?
Here.
When?
Here.
I'll be here, here. And Cynthia is absent. We knew that Cynthia was not able to make it today. Excellent. So we are opening the meeting. This meeting is being recorded in Zoom. Council, Council President Nash, yes, I see your hand.
Yeah, I recommend starting the transcript. If it hasn't been started. I don't know if it has.
I think that. I mean, I'm not sure.
You have enabled closed captioning.
Yeah. Transcript, it's on, right?
Okay, excellent. I just want to make sure because Laura's not here and that's, that was gonna be her means of tracking what, what occurred. All right.
Excellent, thanks.
Thank you.
Jim? Excellent. So this meeting is being recorded, and this meeting is specifically about public comment. The idea is for, for the members of this committee to hear from community members in relationship to accessibility, experiences, and ways to improve transparency and processes around the appointment, the appointment of members to different boards and commissions within the city of Northampton. Each person is gonna have four minutes to, to speak up. Because of the number that we have right now, if somebody after those four minutes feels that they have something left to say, they can queue up again and, and raise their hand again, and they will call back again when everybody would have gone full circle. So I would invite the members of the public to use either the raise hand feature, which is on the bottom of the screen. If you go to reactions, there's a face and a plus sign. You click there, the raise hand feature is there. If not, feel free to turn on your camera and raise your hand. So I can call on you. The comments are gonna be, so the, the meeting, it's, and this is a clarification for the members of the Senate Committee. The members are not, should not either answer or interject. This is for the public to talk to us. We're not answering questions. We're not making comments. We're taking notes and we're listening. And, and for the public so far, we deploy a community survey with people who have either applied to different committees and boards and being selected to serve people who have sent their applications, but never been called. We have already 150 answers to the survey that if you go back to the archives of the city, you are gonna see the recordings of our meetings where we go thoroughly through the, sort of the analysis of the survey. So if people who are interested to do public speaking, if they can use the raised hand, so I can call them, the raised hand feature of just raise their hand, I will call and in the order that it shows Zoom. When you're talking, please say your full name and and, and, and the, if you're comfortable, address is fine. If not, you can say the word where you're, you're zooming from. Claudia Lefkoe.
Hi, hi Claudia Lefkoe, 40 Valley Street. I'm, I'm calling, obviously, I'm zooming in, because this is an issue that has concerned me a great deal. I've lived in the city since 1976. We moved to Northampton because it's a small town, basically, and it seemed an easy place to get involved in things. We, we came from Cambridge, which was a big city, where it was very difficult to get to be heard. And so I have been an activist since the day probably we arrived. I was on the school committee for six years, serving at large from 19, I think it was like 87 to 91, or 86 to 91, I can't remember. And that term, that, that determination or whatever, I'm sorry, I get very anxious talking on these Zoom calls, it's better face to face. But I decided to run for the school committee, or I was put forward as a, to run for the school committee out of a parent organization called Advocates for Children's Education, which we had people in all the elementary schools and junior high in the city who were advocating to improve education, and we were having some great success. We were interacting with teachers, the superintendent and so forth. And so I was put forward as a candidate to serve at large, and I served three terms. In those days, it seemed very possible to influence city government, and out of the school, out of my work on the school committee, we formed a childcare committee. We were instrumental in getting a daycare set up, the, the public, at the PVTA bus garage and so forth. So my expectation that I could get involved in the city and make a difference was met. It was really very, in a very exciting time. But I think as time has gone on, it's been harder and harder for people to get involved and to feel that it means anything. And I'll just give you one example. At one point, there was a great committee formed around the future of arts in the city. We worked for a year. There were probably 30 people from all aspects of arts and housing, whatever, throughout the city. And at the end, you know, the recommendations aren't accepted. So, so committees were being formed, people were given mandates, and in the end, after all the work is done, the city council would not accept the recommendations. Not just on committees like that, that were set up by the city council, but informal organizations that, where people got together, they tried to do something within the community, and the effort was rejected. And I'll just give you two examples in my neighborhood. We got, we had City View Apartments built in this small neighborhood, and we got traffic calming money to, as, you know, as part of the deal. When we tried to, we had a committee in the neighborhood, it met for two or three years. We did all this research on how much traffic was specifically coming through the neighborhood. We made all these recommendations, and every time we made a recommendation, it was not accepted at the city. One of the things we wanted to do was paint crosswalks in our neighborhood, and the city told us that would be impossible. And of course, as everybody knows, downtown, we have painted sidewalks on Main Street in front of thorns. So little by little, one gets the feeling that, okay, maybe, you know, nobody's listening to you, or people have their own ideas, and whatever your idea is, it's going out the door. I had one other example of the, okay, about, about people not listening. So just, I know, now that I have four minutes, I don't see the clock running, so tell me if I'm running over. But so. What's that?
Thirty more seconds.
Okay, so the, the second thing I wanted to say that is, over the years, as I'm still an activist, and on some level maybe being heard less and less, although I'm speaking out, but I'm not getting much reaction to it, that people are literally getting sick from activism. We went, I went to a meeting where a man came specifically to the meeting to say he would not join the meeting in this activity we are engaged in, because he had gotten physically sick from trying to negotiate with the city about something that had to do with his property. It's that, and it's two other people who literally say, I tried to do X and I got sick. I ended up in the emergency room. I had a stroke. I'm not doing this anymore. So my message, I mean, it's not that clear, but I think a lot of times people think one of the barriers is, oh, there's too many small children. Oh, there's this, there's that. But I think one of the barriers that the committee should consider is how open city government is to the input from people who are assigned to tasks, because I feel like that's one of the problems. So, sorry to go on so long. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Claudia. Phil, please feel free to get in touch with any of us to, to talk more about this. I think it's important. And I appreciate your public comment. I'm looking for more, another hand, another person that would want to do public comment. I see around one, two, three, four, five, six, around eight people. Anybody else in line for public comment? Excellent. See Mason Maroon. If you want to state your name, if you feel comfortable with your address, or just a word from where you're submitting to. And you're muted. So I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna, I'm asking you in the system to unmute you.
Ari?
There you are. Thank you so much.
You hear me now? All right. I'm on the Conservation Commission. My name is Mason Maron. Actually, we've, we've got the opposite problem. We, we, we don't have, I never had a problem getting on, on the commission. Most commissions or boards have associate positions where you can't vote, but you can attend the meetings and participate in discussions and so on. And that's how I get on the Conservation Commission. Forty-seven years ago. So I've been through about six mayors. The city council has always been very cooperative when we've done land purchases. And some people, I guess, are probably intimidated by the kind of experience they need to get on a commissioner or board. And that, that's not a problem with the Conservation Commission. We have a good mixture of people who are some are not associated with conservation at all, but are maybe served on a corporate structure or something like that. The, I, I think the city is, has animated easy already to get on commissions. Most, most cities have a problem getting people on commission, not because of the way they have to go, you know, any, allow any special requirements to get onto a board, but a lot of, a lot of cities are having trouble just getting people to populate the boards and the and I'm not sure whether that's just lack of interest or, or what. Maybe people not familiar with what process these boards and commissions Conservation Commission, or if you look out for wetland interests. And actually, the one of the factors in the Conservation Commission was early on, problems with DPDW, because they got more involved wetlands than most other organizations coming through the city. And we have since worked out understandings with the DPDW. They've got generic orders of conditions that they can place on a lot of their projects. And I think there's a good rapport now with the DPDW and the commissions. In the old days, the DPDW, more or less, the enemy of the Conservation Commission. Things have certainly worked out best with that. But I, I have really never seen a, a problem getting on the Conservation. You know, we're, we're, I think we're a member short now, looking for other members, for somebody else to come forward. I think some, some people are intimidated that, well, jeez, you have to be a biologist or you know, be an expert in wildlife conservation or something, get on the board. Don't. Just, just bring experience. Whatever it were in you were involved with, bring that to the commission. You know, we're finding out, okay, a guy that was a chairman of finance or something, actually comes in commission and, and works out and has expertise in a section that maybe other members don't. But I, I have not seen a real problem as far as getting members, at least not through the city process of of a subcommittee where you, every three years, I get a little paper from the subcommittee from the city council, whether I want to continue on commission.
Ten more seconds. Thank you so much, Mason. Thanks for coming and giving public testimony. I saw a couple of people coming in, so welcome everybody. This is being recorded. My timer is going on. This is being recorded for, then people just are coming right now. This is being recorded. We're, we're giving four minutes for each person to be able to talk. We sometimes go over that time. People that after that, they feel that they have something else to say, they can sort of queue up again after we go, after all the people that are already present. This is a listening session, so the members of the select committee are not answering questions or not making comments. Council of Perry.
I, I just wanted to state that if anyone felt like they, they couldn't get their full story out through this listening session in the four minutes, you can also feel free to send an email to myself or some of the other select committee members, if you, if you have more of a story to tell.
Thanks, Derek. George?
Good afternoon, everybody. George Kohout. I live down on State Street. I've currently serve on the planning board. I've also put some time into the Affordable Housing Commission and the Community Preservation Commission too, so I've had a little range of experience with the way folks are nominated to the boards, or at times elected to the boards. I'm also on, on a couple of other nonprofit boards, and overall, I know how difficult it is to, to recruit people from a range of backgrounds to all of the boards. I think the planning board, I'll, I'll speak to that first. I think over time, the mayors have tried to balance the board with a variety of opinions and backgrounds, so it's not to reflect just one kind of demographic, more so in terms of experience and perhaps their professional background than anything else. I, I, and I also want to say, I appreciate what this work group has done in terms of reaching out for input from people who serve on the boards, who have tried to serve on the boards, and I, and I look forward to seeing the, the summary of the interviews or the summary of the reports, the questionnaires that went out. I think that'll be very revealing. I know I answered that myself, and at the risk of duplicating that, I'll just mention some of the things I put into that survey. One is, I think that I've known from personal experience, people I've said have asked George, how do I get on these boards? What do I do? I said, well, there's an application on the website. Go to the website, download it. If you can't do that, you can go to City Hall and get an application, fill it out in hand, and submit it. Too often, I've heard that then it just kind of gets lost into this black hole, unfortunately. At City Hall, nobody reaches out to them to say, thank you, we received your application. Someone will be talking to you. It just doesn't seem to garner any attention, which is off, off-putting, I think, for somebody who's trying for the first time. And so that's tough. I know also that many of the boards that I serve on, it's often older people who are retired, or their children are grown up, or it's younger people who don't have families. Too often, the boards meet at times where it's very difficult for children with family. When I was first on the planning board, I had young boys in high school, and it was tricky to meet at that time of night. We didn't have Zoom where we could stay at home. Everything was person to person, so I know often the, the solution to that is provide daycare, which of course, isn't an easy solution because of licensing and staffing possibilities. People serving on boards can't bring their children to meetings. It's very difficult. But I think that's an impediment for sure, if we're looking for a range of people to serve on the boards. I think now, as we get more technology dependent, I think some of the technology for some folks can be an impediment, especially if you're asking a lot of folks to appear on Zoom. We have to do a lot of reading and downloading of applications and background on our computers. So you need to have a good computer at home. You need to have a good printer. Often, that can be an impediment to really engaging in a meeting. Let me see, I'm throwing out all these challenges, unfortunately, but it is true that it's difficult for people who aren't represented on the board, people who live in large apartment complexes, people who are younger to really access it the same way as people who come from these white collar jobs. I'm not speaking for all the committees, of course, throughout the city, but the ones I'm familiar with. I think if we could offer a monetary incentive at times, a stipend to people who serve on a committee for the amount of time they send out a meeting, or perhaps the amount of time they have to do in researching different articles that might help with some people. I don't think anybody's gonna join a board because they're gonna make fifteen dollars an hour or so, they can spend their time better elsewhere, but I think it might be just enough to get someone to, to think about joining a board. I think another thing that might be encouraged when someone puts in an application, again, as I mentioned, if somebody could reach out to them and talk to them about the position, that would be helpful. I, I offered that, perhaps that could be the ward counselor or some member of the board that they're applying to. We've talked about that on the planning board, and many members said, yes, they'd be willing to talk to people who are interested. Mason brought up a good point about associate members. I'm not sure if that's true for every board that you could come to meetings, not be a voting meeting, but a voting member, but you can see what's going on. That might also be helpful. And yeah, I just know, I just know we need to do a better job in getting more representation from all the walks of our life of populations here in Northampton, and this is a great start. So again, I appreciate it very much, and I hope to see your summary when it comes out. So thank you very much for the time today on, on a gorgeous Sunday. Adios.
Thank you so much, George. Good to see you. For people who are coming in, and I totally forgot to say, if you are on the phone, if you dial asterisk nine, you're gonna be able to use the raise hand feature. If that's not an option, feel free to unmute yourself and put yourself in the queue so that I can call you. So we're gonna move to the, to the next person who raises his hand. I saw that some people, there you are. So the next person is gonna be Joella Turbado.
Hi, everybody. I'm Joella, also known as Jada, and forgive me, I have a bad hair day, so I don't want to scare you guys, so I'll take the video off. Um, I appreciate the two speakers who had spoken, or was it two or three? And they all said some things that are very important. I think that if you do have a group or committee that you are lacking people, I just want to think about, because the first person who spoke, I was like, I don't even know what that is. I've never even heard what it is. So how are you outreach to people? Are you going in the communities? Are you going into public housing? Are you going into the schools? Are you saying, we got this great thing going on, and maybe we can get some young folks, they can come do an intern, they could come shadow me? I'm just wondering what you're saying, because it's almost like is it a power of attraction other than promotion? You may need a little bit of both. And I can say, I'm on two, well, I'm on several committees. I pardon me, don't even want to say all the committees I was on, but I think for me, and I have to say this, I have lived in Northampton for many years. I went to school and I always thought Northampton, but up until about, what, three, four years ago, I never got involved in Northampton business, because I'm just gonna tell you, and I don't know who you are, I hope you don't hurt your feelings. Northampton is a progressive town. Uh, in theory, in practice, no. So I taught at, I taught in Springfield. I I've joined a Y in Holyoke. I mean, I just felt like I lived here, because it really, you know, I'm used to, you know, at one time, I was seeing Francis Crow protesting. I was like, good, I'll go over and say, yay, yay, rah, rah, stop the war. But I never, there was not a concerted effort to, to attract and to befriend and to reach out. However, after, I, I know this, because it's a day after inauguration. I mean, I heard the Rocky theme song in the back of me. And some of the groups that I, some of the places that I've ventured to, for example, I would go to the food pantry. I have never seen in this town until then. That group of board of directors and staff reached out in ways that are, I think, unprecedented here in this town. During the time when the world was shut down, they looked at themselves and say, look, we're mainly white, any of us are lesbian. We really need to do something. I think the whole thing about George Floyd really impacted people, and they had to close down because of the whole pandemic. And I've never seen anyone in truthfulness, introspectively, look at themselves and say, what do we need to do? And from that, I think I was in line, and someone like nervously asked if I would be a part, and I was like, yes. I said, yes. They didn't hear me say, yes. They were still explaining. Well, you know, I know it's, I said, I said, yes. Because Kamala Harris said, people of color, answer the call, get involved. And I was doing that. And they did some pretty amazing things. They found some funding. I don't know exactly how it is, you have to explain. They give a little Visa card for people, because just as somebody said, they need to get people here, babysit, all that, and they really worked through that. Was it perfect? No, we're still working on stuff. But that was the first group that I really felt like, well, the services was great, but then being on part of the committee. And then I, I really thought, oh, God, am I gonna be the only person of color? I'm glad I'm not. And they really put a concern. So that was, I think that was a model that I hope other people follow. Secondly, I joined two other boards that I'm very passionate about, and supposedly they had a fee. I don't ever think I ever got paid what it was supposed to be, and I don't even know what it is. One, I've been on a year and haven't got a dime. And I spent a lot of time in those meetings, after those meetings, going to events, and I haven't got a dime. And I think, do people think I'm made of money? Maybe I'm from Texas. They really think I'm an oil billionaire. And so I go to these things, and I think in one group I'm with, at least 25 hours a week I put into it. And I don't know what I get paid. I think 400 one year, maybe 700 the next year. So I think sometimes when I'm totally exhausted, and I think, I would rather be working three jobs, because I have, where you're tired and exhausted, instead of working, I appreciate all the work that I'm doing, and I see the fruits of my labor, but I'm just saying, who in my socioeconomic background goes sit here and work like a crazy person? I have no life, and I admitted that, admit to that and acknowledge it, and I'm committed. But one of the things, and I think with this group, I'm trying to figure it out, is that first I thought, oh, I'm not the only one in the group, and we're working together. But that doesn't mean I have any power, that I'm respected, and particularly in one group, that I'm going into people who know each other. They hang out. Oh, how was the orchestra this weekend? And then the rest of us, they said, well, you can't talk to each other, because you'd be breaking open meeting law, but they hanging out and even probably voting to keep things the way they are. So it's like, I feel like I'm a colorful addendum. And so that's not what I wanted to start for, but that's a very important organization, I think. Why am I doing it? I have to keep like reassuring myself, keep going, keep going. But I wish there was some mentor, there was some legal help. There was some, probably mentoring from someone outside of the group to see how things going on. I think we need a whole lot, and if we're talking about it, okay, that's fine, that's good. Are we doing something about it? Oh, that would be better. So anyway, you should never give me a chance to talk and ask, and ask me what I think, because I'm gonna tell you. Have a good day, y'all.
Thank you so much, Joella. It's always good to hear you. Excellent. So we're gonna move to the next person. I'm gonna wait for if there's anybody, Devin, Devin Bruce. You're muted. There.
There we go. Um, hi, um, I am currently serving on the Transportation and Parking Commission. And I have been previously on that commission for some years. I got off and my seat was not filled for a period of time and I would say that the reason I got back on was literally because someone at DPW said, we need your seat filled. And so that's my first suggestion is that many committees work in conjunction with or associated with uh departments of the city. And I think those departments know the people that they interact with. And I I I uh very much appreciate what Joelle has said about the network of people being um self-serving in some ways. And and my suggestion unfortunately parallels that because I think the departments can find people to serve on committees. And but I don't want that to be limiting to branch out to find different people. I think the departments know a range of people. Um, so I just cite that as one example about how seats do get filled. Um, I echo what George said about not getting any feedback. So I put in my application uh based on a conversation and it was a long period of time before I had any idea of what happened to it. So there does need to be um a feedback loop that says, yes, we got your application. It's going over to this department head or this uh board chair and we'll be back in touch with you and you can expect to have to fill out a uh form for uh the clerk in order to serve on the committee. So that sort of conversation about expectation, I think, would be very useful. Um, and last, um, I kind of uh, I haven't looked in a while, but I think the application for serving on a committee is kind of buried in the website. I'd like to see it, you know, right up front. I want I mean, there are, there are hundreds of seats that need to be filled by citizens who are willing to put in their time. So I think that ought to be a button right up front. And last, um I ended up in the beginning getting on transportation and parking because I came from work in that area and I felt like I owed it to the city to to sit on a seat and do some work because I had some background in it. I think stories from people who have had a good experience serving on committees um would be helpful. I, you know, a a good story goes a long way and I I think Mason's example of being on the Conservation Commission and that it works and they bring in new people. You'd like to have those stories communicated because it it can be uh if people don't know what it's gonna be like to be on a committee. As as George said, I served on planning board for years and you know, it's a, it's a very important job, but it's also a job where you get fussed at a lot. I mean, people don't come to the planning board to say, I really like what you're doing. You know, and so, you know, that unknowing, not knowing what to expect when you get on a committee could uh could be helped with outreach from the committee itself or with some stories to um illustrate some positive aspects of having been involved with the city. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Um, Devin, you still have a minute if you wanna use it. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Well, actually, I I do. Um, I'm I'm here because I'm a trustee and I wanted to um let you know that I will be reporting back to them. They actually asked that someone from Forbes Library attend the meeting. I I might have done so anyway, but um, there is more interest, I think, in what you're doing than you may experience from the number of people that showed up today.
Thank you so much, Devin. Uh, feel free to either getting in touch with with me as the chair or vice chair gore uh with any kind of, if you guys want any meeting. Excellent. We're gonna move forward. Uh, Aaron.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I happen to be a senior, seventy-one years old, who was born and raised in the city. And I can tell you, we are underrepresented in this city. I have applied for the Senior Center Advisory Committee. I will never ever get on there. Even though I have an associate's degree in recreation leadership and a bachelor's in business administration. And I will let you know, I have filed one discrimination suit against the city and I'm about to do another one. Because the seniors in the city are being abused by the city council and the mayor. You provide no handicap transportation. And unlike every other city in town, we have to pay for it. And all our residents think we get it for free. We have taxis, caravans that you can't get in and you can't get out of if you have osteoarthritis. And I know that for a fact. Because what they were going to do was give me a stool to get out. No handles. No way to get out of their safe. And not one of you cares. This is what the seniors have gone through since the beginning of COVID when we were hung up on by Ben Emeritus O'Leary's office. And when we complained, we were told it did not happen. This is what we've put up with since two thousand and twenty, and not one of you cares about that. You think we're all having a great old time. Well, guess what? We don't even have housing in the city of Northampton for those of us who were born here. Because it goes to everybody from Springfield and Holyoke and Chicopee. And I know that for a fact cuz my mother-in-law moved from Chicopee. And she lives in housing, but I, who was born and raised here, I can't get in. So you guys need to start doing your job. And you start, need to start appointing people who were born here that know the history who are qualified for the boards that you all keep ignoring. So this is great committee. Hope you do something finally, but I found all you do is talk, 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 and you don't do anything. So have a nice day.
Thank you so much, Erin. We're gonna move forward. Um, and I still see a couple of people that haven't talked um before moving to the to queue up again. Excellent. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna sort of, we're gonna move, it's sort of full circle. If somebody who hasn't talked, uh, is interested to talk, just feel free to raise your hand. The recent features on the bottom of the screen in the section reactions with the happy face and the plus sign. Uh, if you cannot use that, just feel free to uh excellent. Uh, Edgar.
Hello, uh, my name is Edgar. Um, I used to go by Edgar. Um, I too, I'm having a bad hair day, so I will not uh no, I'm just okay. I'm actually just munching on stuff here and I don't wanna be seen eating uh on uh online here, but um I do serve on the uh Northampton Housing Partnership um as well as on the um Northampton Housing Authority Board. Um, I've always been interested in uh uh anything related with housing homelessness um and improvement of quality of life uh for the residents here. Um, I was um born and raised in Puerto Rico until I was twelve years old. Um, I've been here in Northampton since nineteen eighty-nine. I went to high school at Northampton High School. And I have raised uh my children here in Northampton as well. Um, I have a twenty-seven-year-old daughter and a nineteen-year-old son. Uh, they're both out of the home now. Um, and um they have had a a great experience growing up here as S I did. Um, I grew up in public housing in Florence Heights. Um, and I uh surely uh lived the uh village experience. Um, I understand the village concept cuz I lived it. Um, and I had a great childhood and teenage years uh living in Florence Heights. Um, at the time, I felt uh, well, looking at it now, um, I see that I was um we really had a lot more uh support and involvement from the community at large. Um, and although there were times where we felt isolated all the way up in um uh Florence Heights, sort of away from everything uh in town, um, our uh uh neighbors, um, our parents um uh organized themselves. We had a a tenant association in Northham uh at Florence Heights. And we did excellent work collaborating with the Housing Authority uh and the director at the time uh to really improve the quality of life for uh for the residents of Florence Heights. Um, it's because my parents and uh and my friends' parents were so involved that uh ever since I was a teenager, I was involved in um anything housing related in Northampton. Uh, as a nineteen-year-old, I served on the board of uh uh Valley CDC and we did, I was involved in several um just really cool projects, uh one of which was completely remodeling and re um uh building the foundation at that building on uh on South Street, right behind the Academy Music. Uh, I was involved in that project and also the beginning stages of creating uh Village Hill. And um how I got on on the Housing Partnership was actually quite difficult to get on there. Um, I had applied, uh, never received any response. This was about four or five years ago. Um, and um I actually had to reach out to the mayor at the time and ask how how come I hadn't gotten a response or anything. And I knew there was um uh positions available on the Housing Partnership. Um, and I was not getting a call. Um, so I kind of gave the mayor a nudge, at which time uh he did, uh, had somebody call me back and um and I went through the process of getting uh appointed to the Housing Partnership. Um, and so I'm actually mostly here today to observe, listen um and and in hopes that the process has gotten easier for folks uh trying to get into uh uh and serve on boards uh now. Um, and um I I wanna uh be able to learn to see how I can help others um uh bring their voice uh and their civic duty to uh uh to the city. As somebody mentioned, um, there is a lot of uh uh positions available uh for serving on different boards. And I think uh we could really do so much better job advertising for these positions and letting folks know that we're interested in their involvement. Uh, so I'd be willing to uh for some more of the follow-up work uh that this committee is doing. Uh, which, by the way, I'm really, really grateful that you all are doing this and have uh put in so much time and effort into figuring this this out. Uh, it's really commendable and I'm I'm really grateful to y'all for uh for doing this. And so um I would be um um really willing to be involved in any follow-up work to this. Um, whether it's uh reaching out to folks, um, I am very involved in uh in public housing in the city. So reaching out to folks that live in public housing uh would be something that would be very easy for me to do. Uh, uh, so just reach out. Um, and uh uh again, I'm really uh happy about the work that you all doing and I'd be um uh really excited to uh be part of uh creating the solutions um that you all are looking for. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Edgar. Before going back into the sort of the queue up, is there anybody else who hasn't spoken, who hasn't uh been part of the public speaking that would like to be part of? If you're a friend, you're fine to be able to use the recent feature, it's asterisk and nine. If you, if if that gets too complicated, feel free to unmute yourself and uh sort of just to say that you you wanna do public speaking. We're gonna go to you, Claudia, right now. Claudia, let's go. And if somebody who hasn't, is pick is pick up dead uh wants to do it, just feel free after Claudia to raise your hand or to unmute yourself. Claudia?
Hi, uh, are you quitting at one o'clock?
Not necessarily. We're gonna, we're gonna keep going at least at until we have gone through everybody.
Okay, great. So so I mean, the conversation is really interesting. And I think uh it's too bad that more people haven't zoomed in. I think it's you know, I don't know how people found out about this. I mean, Jim Nash, who's my city counselor, he sent out a notice. Some people who I forwarded to said twelve on Sunday is not a very good time for people to join. But I just wanna make um a few comments about because I think this is for me a bigger conversation about, you know, about democracy in the city and how, what the culture of the city is. And so I appreciate what everybody's been saying, especially like Edgardo. Um, this idea that his parents were active, that he becomes active, hopefully his children are active. That I think by participating in the city and commissions or elected positions or whatever, being active in the life that you're living, like I got involved in Bridge Street School. And my kids see that I'm working to improve the educate, their education. They see that this is an important part of of being part of a community. So I don't, I don't know how we can address this, but I think it's a bigger conversation that needs to be had. Because you hear that people are frustrated, people need people on commissions and people who want to join commissions feel like they can't join commissions. And then there are those of us who have been on commissions who feel like the city actually doesn't listen to to the outcome of them. So I think it's a really multifaceted problem and it's great you're 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 confronting this. I personally didn't even know such a committee existed. Maybe the Gazette could cover it or you could do a piece on on public radio or something, but you know, use uh XRJ, use our local radio station. Somehow this conversation, I think, is really critical. So I'm glad you've done it. I'm glad you've heard people out and I'm interested to see the outcome. I would encourage you to have a public listening session where actually people could sit together and speak to each other cuz I think Zoom for for me and maybe others is not that easy. So thanks. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Claudia. Do we have anybody else that is interested in either, you know, having a second time uh of a statement or somebody who hasn't been part of the of the public speaking yet? Um, Edgar.
Uh, yeah, well, thanks. Um, I I just thought that um I forgot to mention about my experience on serving on on the two boards that I am uh part of. And so I wanna touch up on that a little bit. Uh, because there's a, that's a pretty big contrast uh between uh my experience on one board and my experience on another. For instance, um, being on the Housing Partnership has been um has been really good. I really enjoy serving with the folks that are part of that group. Um, and I have always felt uh heard and valued. Uh, and not only heard and valued, but um also um whenever I bring things up to this committee, um, they really listen. Um, and we try to do uh whatever we can to um uh to look for solutions uh to whatever matter I might bring up. For instance, uh uh one year, um, I I brought up to the the partnership that you know, I would like more support around building a playground in Hampshire Heights. Um, because I felt like there's no reason why our public housing kids shouldn't have a safe place to play uh when there are so many resources here in our city. There are so many um uh, there is, there's there's definitely enough funding to create uh a better quality of life for our residents. And so, you know, um, and I had heard um excuses before, I like, you know, there's a, there's a there's a playground across the street at Jackson Street. Um, and so they can use that, but that's that, I I wasn't happy with that at all because uh logistically, even though it's diagonally across the street, i- it is quite difficult for parents to get uh their kids uh over to the school to play on that playground versus like they're in the backyard playing. And so uh when I brought this up to the partnership, not only they heard me, but uh they supported me a hundred percent. Uh, when I brought this up to the partnership, not only they heard me, but uh, they supported me a hundred percent in my desire to build this, this. Um, this playground. And then um, City Council rallied around me and then the community rallied around me. And then uh, the Northampton Housing Authority, of course, the owners of the property. Um, they were excited uh, about um, uh, building uh, the playground. And I, and I. In that, through that entire process, I felt like, oh, man, this is how communities should really behave. This is great. So we, we went and we applied for CPA funding. The CPA approved the grant. Uh, and then the, the city. Uh, kicked in another hundred and fifty thousand dollars from City BG funding. It was such a participatory uh, process that it left me just feeling so grateful to live in this city to. Uh, to be part of uh, of such a group. Um, so, you know, publicly, I want to thank uh, the uh, the. Peg uh, who was the, the staff member at the time and, and working at the um, in, in the planning department. Um, who really saw the vision and, and really helped move forward, but also everyone else who participated um. Uh, uh, in that process. That's just one example. And, and, and the benefits that came out of that, I mean, obviously the residents, the, the, the. The kids in Hampshire Heights now have a beautiful playground uh, to play in, uh, right next to a community garden. Which I also had a lot of support from the community at large uh, in order uh, to help build. Um. And now my experience serving on the Northampton Housing Authority Board hasn't been as, you know, uh, accomplishing or as. Um, as exciting as it is uh, to serve on the Housing Partnership. Um, I, I have had many hurdles. Um, I don't always feel valued. I don't always feel heard. And actually, sometimes. I even feel attacked. Uh, so, you, you know, these are things that, that um, uh, for folks coming in. Um, you know, it could be difficult, you know, to serve. I've seen several members quit. Uh, from the Board of the Housing Authority because of their um, uh, disappointments in how. Uh, their relationship is, is, or was at the time with, with the, with the Board and the staff. And so I feel that at the Housing Authority, we still have a lot, a room to improve. Um, and I'm working hard to uh, try and, and, and improve. Uh, what we do uh, uh, as, as Board Members of that group. Um, and we are seeing some improvements lately, so I'm looking forward uh, for more and more. Input from residents of public housing so that we can improve the quality of, of life. Um, because it is possible. I lived it. I lived the village constant. I, I lived. Being supported by my media community and the Mayor and Housing Authority and uh, everyone involved. And so I know it's possible. Um, and that's not what our children in public housing are experiencing today, unfortunately. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you so much, Edgardo. Do we have anybody else that either has not participated or would like to participate one more time? Mason. And you're muted. I just asked, send you a request for unmuted. There you are.
Um, I got on the Conservation Commission. I didn't even know there was one. Until. Well, as former member of the City Council, I don't think he was a member at the time, but uh. Came uh, over to my house and saw a crack in the cellar and the planning board was um, looking at a. Uh, continuation of the development that I'm living in Florence. Uh, and another street and he was telling the planning board. Problems on the street that was already there, which was when I was on. But when I got on the, on the uh. Conservation Commission, I sent in a resume to the Chairman of the Commission. And got on as an associate member. And then a couple of months later, one of the members, um, hours changed at work and I was voting member then. And uh. I have been on that, uh, that committee ever since. Um, this July will be forty-seven years. And I, I found that this is one of the first um, communities I've ever lived in. That I really wanted to give something back to the uh, community because I, it's such a great place to be. My experiences on the board. Now have our own city, um, but ones ordinance besides the state, but ones action. That we have just, you know. And it's, it's just a great experience. I'm uh, I'm shooting for fifty years. After that, someone else could be a member. But it's been a pleasure to serve on this, on this committee. And uh, I don't think I'd ever give that uh, that experience up. Like I say, I, I submitted my resume that I don't think if the Council even had a. Sign-up sheet or application uh, formed, fill out. Um, it was uh, I guess a process where you just let somebody know in, in, in the. City Council or you let the Mayor know. Back to, I was appointed by Mayor David Kramer. And I was kind of hoping Narcois would keep on going and I could start with a David and then with one, but um. It's, it's been nice. Others that serve on this. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you so much.
Oh, one thing, I was, I was also a uh. Sat down and with a group of people and came up with the uh, Community Preservation. Uh, Association. I, I was instrumental with a group of people establishing the rules and regulations and I was. I served on the uh, Community Preservation for. Well, first five years of. Thank you.
Thanks, Mason. Um, is anybody else who has not yet participated? It's so, and is there anybody else who has participated who would like to go again? Juela, I saw your hand.
Yes, if I may be permitted. Uh, I really think this has been a very good meeting and I do appreciate everyone sharing. And as I'm looking to, listening to um, uh, Mr. Consell speak about a time where he grew up. I didn't, I never in my whole life had public housing until I was an adult. So I didn't realize how wonderful an environment it was. I haven't particularly experienced um. That here in public housing, I was a head resident at Mount Holyoke College and it's a different um, economic, socioeconomic uh. Factor there. And that was a sense of community when I worked there. I saw people doing some of the things in different way. That made people feel like you are important, you're a part of us and you value. And I wish that we had that in our public housing. I was raised by my grandmother, but uh, never in a public housing setting up until here, because I. I don't know, maybe because I just went to Europe and Switzerland and all my friends in college all lived in public housing. It was a normal thing, but it wasn't a. They were valued nevertheless. Uh, so I just also wanted to say that I, I, as I mentioned, I, I have had some uh. Organizations and boards that I'm a part of that are just wonderful to me. Uh, ideas are heard, um, validated. Um, particular, I. I feel like if I don't mention a Ward Three Neighborhood Association, and I just want to say, you know, I remember the first time I went there, because I was, you know, I had some. Issues and I wanted to know where I could talk. And um, I remember going there and. I'm not going to say who was the president at the time, but I guess you could guess, uh, made the most welcoming speech. And immediately then, it was like, we may disagree with the, I mean, it was just the most welcoming thing that I was like, okay, all right, okay, I think I'll come a little bit more to this. Um, and since I have been on public housing, I have had, because I didn't know anyone. As a matter of fact, I've just. Up until I started serving, I met um, a fellow Board Member. I didn't know him. Uh, I have had to go other places and to learn about my job. And my duties that I swore to. I think sometimes on boards. You defer to what the people are saying. If you have somebody who says, well, that's the law, well, I, some people don't question it. I have always questioned things. But I go to a nice restaurant, it's very nice, but when I get the receipt, I'm gonna check it. Uh, and there are times I find errors in that. And the very fact that I was questioning. Uh, some people got offended by that. Like, I should just be grateful that I'm on the board. Um, so I think that that was a little strange and I really searched around on my own. And this wasn't too difficulty. Difficult, because I grew up very impoverished and I didn't know anything about school. Only school I know about higher education were people who went to play sports. And I remember I would go around, I felt like Frederick Douglass, like. Uh, what's some learning you doing? Can you show me that? I would just go around and I'd look and I'd ask and. Even though I was nervous and think I could, I asked and, you know, I learned it. I didn't, you know, didn't know there was government. I didn't know anything like that. So in one way, I feel like I'm. Repeating that, whereas here, I'm like, what's going on? And I found some really great organizations that helped me in housing. But unfortunately, it's not here in this great progressive city of Northampton. It's uh, in the Boston area, like there's a Mill King Institute. They sent me in for training, helped set us up in a Airbnb, had paid for this. I mean, that's where we have meetings and. I would even say therapy groups online, you know, from alarm to calm and talking and communicating with other people, but not so much from here. I think I'm, and as a result of that, I think I'm the only Board Member who is one course shy of my National Association for Redevelopment. And uh, Housing Redevelopment uh, cer- certification. And that meant every Saturday, almost every Saturday from nine to noon, I was taking a course. Luckily, online. And I have to tell you, many of them were free. Uh, thank goodness. They recognize as resident Board Members, so I do appreciate that. I think I have taken. I think that's really great, but there are some things like a convention. And there are some people here, we've been to a convention. I went to, uh, someone paid my way for a delegate. So, but there are times when I went and said, guys, I'm going to this, it wasn't validated. It was almost blaming me like, because I had to pay for my own way. I had to pay for everything here and um, and I have to tell you, at one convention, I went to the NARO Convention. And I want to say about between seven hundred people. And I, I say that if I, if you could see my face, I'd put my face right up to the camera and say, I was the only resident board. A, a Commissioner who paid for themselves. And other, you know, came back and told the organization, I came back, I mean, I submitted before I went, because I didn't know about it until I take this. Took this class and they said, of course, everybody goes, you have a professional development and your Housing Authority pays for it. So I submitted it and said, no, I don't really see how this can help. And then when, you know, i- it, it, it came out like, I can't believe this is happening. And the optics. They're saying, well, we told her not to go and she went anyway. Like, this is the kind of stuff, the mic, not even a micro. Aggression. This is the type of slight that is, I'm trying to do everything I can because I'm for the resident housing and the citizens of Northampton. And it's an obstacle, one obstacle after the other. And I don't understand the hesitancy to uh, to reward. Uh, people who are trying to learn more. It's not just sitting on a board, rubber stamping everything. And I was, in our handbook, we're told not to do that. And if you look at some of the histories around the state, people got in trouble. I'll speak about it, Chelsin, Chelsea Housing Authority. That's what they did. And I don't want to vote on something that I don't know anything about. And so, uh. That's been just one challenge. And so, uh, I'm staying on for the long term. Uh, I, I'm committed to it, but. Something like that, like the city needs to, and I'm, it's a hard thing if you grow up poor, you don't want to, I know me, don't want to ask anybody for some money. So I can learn and do my job better. So I think people need to think about that. I don't know where people are gonna get money from. I, but that's the part, is I've lived in a rich state. I mean, I live in a rich city that, that's worth a knowledge all around, but I'm begging so I can learn my job better. And there's two other meetings coming up. One for the, I didn't even realize this until the last year, there is a Massachusetts Union of Public Housing Tenants. Now, they're having a convention in two months. Uh, in, I'd like to go.
Thirty more seconds.
No, I'm done. I'd like to go. So, anyway, uh, thanks for letting me speak, sorry.
Don't worry about it. Thanks, Juela. Um, excellent. Is there anybody else in the public that either has not spoken or that it's uh, wants to go a second time? Excellent. So I'm, one of the things that I'm gonna do, I'm putting in the chat. My uh, select committee email, if people wants to get in touch uh, with me or um, with members, they can do it. Just feel free to shoot us an email if you want to meet one-to-one. We have been, one of the main conversations that we're having with our members is that, has been that. Uh, one-to-ones are encouraged. People feel comfortable sort of sharing more sort of personal experiences uh, one-to-one, that's encouraged and permitted. Uh, if anybody wants to send us in the, i- if you think that we should be looking at something specific, or there is a document that you would like to put. Bring to our attention, I would appreciate that. Uh, you can send it there to me and I can spread it. To the, to the members of the select committee, or you feel free to send it to the entire select committee. I just want to remind the select committee, when that happens, please do not reply all. Just reply to the person that sent it, saying thank you or um, with any follow-up, so we, we do not violate open meeting law. Again, last time, where somebody who has not spoken or somebody who has not gone a second time. Excellent. Um, thank you so much, everybody. Uh, just want to remind you, this select committee meets the second and the fourth Tuesday of every month. Uh, from seven thirty to nine PM. Our chart is gonna end in uh, April fifteenth. Um, and April fifteenth, we're gonna be uh, submitting our final report to the Mayor and the City Council of Northampton. Thanks to all the members. Uh, our next meeting is gonna be in, in two weeks and a half, more or less. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, so we're closing the public comment event.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second that. Excellent. Motion to adjourn by one and second by Garrick. Uh, we're gonna do roll call. Jamila? Garrick?
Yes.
When?
Yes.
Javier, yes, and Cynthia absent. Um, we're ending this meeting. Thank you so much of the committee members that kept testing on today, feel each of us. Thanks to City Council President Nat and City Council Vice President Foster for the support. And hopefully we are gonna attend to our next meeting, the second week, Tuesday at seven thirty, the second week of April. Thank you so much.